Twenty meeting the planning commission order will begin with the pledge of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the roll.
Mr. Varga.
Present.
Mr. Cicero.
Present.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mr. Perkovich.
Here.
Mr. Keedeman.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here. I entertain a motion to approve of the minutes of the July 30th meeting.
Omoode.
Second.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Keedeman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have two public hearings this evening. The format we're going to follow for the public hearings is we're going to allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at that location. And those wishing to speak in favor are afforded a similar opportunity. And those wishing to speak against are given equal opportunity. So with that in mind, condition is permit to allow a truck and service facility at 7321 Burridge. Is that applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see them. If they are there, please indicate within the Q and A section.
Are you here? Mr. Moravich, are you here?
I don't see him on the list.
Okay.
Unless there's somebody representing.
We'll move on to condition is permit to allow a church at 7272 Atkins Road. Is that applicant here?
They are here.
Okay, give us an overview of what you'd like to do at that location.
Steve Sindelar, we want to unmute him, Larry?
I just saw him there. I unmuted Rich by mistake.
Thanks.
Am I unmuted? I think so.
Yes, you are.
All right, hello, sorry folks, I can't get my camera working. So I'm Pastor Steve Sindelar, I'm one of the pastors at Grace Church. And we are right down the street at 306, close to 306 in Bellflower. And we are just proposing to move our location from that, essentially that location, same use, same, same kind of structure we currently have, just a little bit bigger of a building.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in favor?
There's one person that would like to, and I'm unmuting Sharon Stone now. Sharon, you're unmuted.
Hi, thank you, my camera's not working either. My question is, is our road is already very, very busy? And sometimes it takes a few minutes just to get out of my driveway. And I want to know how this is going to impact, one, us getting, you know, off the road, two, where the driveway for the church is going to be put at?
Can you state your name for the record, please? And your address?
My name is Sharon Stoneman. I live at 7253 Atkins Road.
Okay, we'll get you answers to those questions during the presentation.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Commissioner's questions, I'll close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioner's questions for the applicant or the administration. Mr. Sin, is the pastor Sinlar?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You seem to be a little deficient in the landscaping portion of the presentation.
Yes, sir, we are working with the city, with you all. We had another meeting yesterday. Do you have a specific, a specific thing like me to address, or just?
Right ahead.
It was our understanding from the, that we would, you know, do foundation plantings and all that during the site, the final site. So I think that, that we're definitely going to be doing that. As far as the, the buffer to the east side, you can see the tree line, that's a, it's a mature tree line.
Yes.
With a, with a, with a mound already in place. And it's, it's pretty much well filled in. We did have 100, 100 feet of it surveyed, one of the thinner parts. And we have, by a landscape architect, she identified a good amount of native tree species, all healthy, I believe 15 or so, above a 12 inch caliber, and then about the same amount below a 12 inch caliber. And so our, our idea on that side was, I have spoken to many of the residents in the last couple of years on that side of the property, and/or if they weren't home, left a letter, introducing ourselves and offering to chat with them well before this. And the large majority of the residents said, we would, we would just appreciate if you would keep the existing tree line how it is. And so our landscape architect has proposed to do that. And where we, where we feel that there may be spaces that we can add evergreen shrubs and trees, we're doing that, you can see that that's indicated. And then where there's really not space to do that, so that we don't have to cut into the existing tree line, we're proposing in those places to put a fence instead.
Okay.
Then on the, on the, the, I'm sorry, that's the west side, on the east side, that right now is an existing field, we're, we would eventually let, we've, another church owns that property, we would eventually like to either partner with them to, to use that for, you know, for recreation space, field space, those kind of things. So we, we'd really prefer not to completely separate that area from our current existing, you know, proposed site. We will add some more trees to that location per our conversation with Larry yesterday. But, but we would like to try to keep that, that accessible for potential future partnership with the existing church that's on that five acres.
Gotcha.
Mr. Miller, did you have a comment?
Just thinking that maybe this will be something that could be discussed at the site plan, but he's done a very nice job, so.
Okay.
We got the information.
There you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So you have 11 classrooms and three additionals identified. What and when are these going to be in use?
Yeah, so it's, it's much like our current facility chairman or councilman, we, so we, we have, you know, like a typical church on a Sunday where we have one main room, an auditorium, where we meet and where we worship. But our, our mission is, is also to, to, you know, be involved with each other and frankly, just learn about the Bible together. And so those educational spaces are like our current facility, where we have 10, something like that now, 10 spaces. And so those are what many churches would call Sunday School classrooms. There's a nursery on the, what you see right, right before you is the second level, and those are, those are, those partitions are potential operable partitions in the middle of that area would allow us to have a larger hall, or break it up into more classroom space if we needed it. And again, it's all Bible study related, by age group, by life group, young marriages, younger folks, children, teens, that kind of thing.
So it's not functioning as a, as a school, per se?
That's correct, that's correct. That's our current use right now is, in our current facility is we have 10, 12 large classrooms that we use essentially for our Bible study hour, or Sunday School hour, some, some churches call it. And then we meet on Wednesdays, smaller groups, prayer meetings, that kind of thing. So, but it would not be, you know, as far as right now, we don't operate as school, we're not, we don't have any plans to do so. If we did, obviously that would be additional, I believe, a conditional use permit, but this is just for a church, Mr.?
So it's used on Sundays and Saturdays?
Yes, sir.
What I'm trying to get to is, it's not going to create a lot of traffic, is what I'm.
Correct, yeah, it would, yeah, I appreciate that, yeah, Sundays are probably for one hour, you know, would be our highest volume. And then we have, you know, every once in a while Bible studies during the week, but it would, it would be not nearly the kind of volume that would even be noticeable, Mr. Appreciate that, thank you, yep.
Let me ask you one more, more question. Would you still have the men or police officers directing traffic out in front?
That would be, yeah, that would be completely up to, you know, the city's recommendation. I think, we, to be honest with you, we appreciate the, the police officer's presence, even if he's not directing traffic, just with everything going on, you know, especially with what's happened even in churches, it's very nice to hire that as an off-duty police officer. But we, we wouldn't, i- if it's something the city would appreciate, we would certainly welcome that as well, to be honest, so.
I'm just trying to, trying to answer that lady's question.
Yes, sir.
About turning out of her driveways. Driveway.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You, the, the plan, the proposed site plan shows two detention basins along Atkins Street. Are those, will those be able to handle, when you have the addition and the additional parking added? Or do you need to have more detention?
I don't know if Rich is on the line.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Those, those detention ponds are connected together, and they currently only service Phase One, a little bit of Phase Two, we haven't quite analyzed the entire, you know, future development yet, but at least Phase One and part of Phase Two.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, when you come back for the final, I think that needs to be identified as where the, what the final site plan would be.
Right, I agree.
I also, I also noticed on this, on the site plan, that it doesn't really show the current footprint of the building. It, the current print has two foyer's that have an arc to them. And for some reason, yours, it just has a flat wall on the south side. I'm saying?
Yes, sir. I, Jack, are you on the line? I, I believe that is, that may be due to changing, changing, changing the, the future addition a little bit, so I'll, I'll definitely make a note to clarify that.
Yeah, it just looks like your first floor plan, first phase floor plan has these foyer's at both ends, and on the site plan, it only shows it in one side. It's not a big deal, I'm just pointing out that it seems to be.
Okay.
And then there's the comments that the city had about the, the metal wall on the temporary side, the temporary exterior wall. When do you think you would be building in addition to this?
It would be our desire to do that within five years. But I, you know, I, I, I can appreciate you all, you know, interested in that concept. I can't, I can't necessarily commit to that timeline, but that would be our desire.
But would you be responding to the city's comments by not putting up metal panels on that side and doing EPIS or some other kind of exterior treatment?
Yeah, I think we'd like to show them at least what we were looking at, and then, if not, come, come to an agreement. Quite frankly, we still have to do some more number crunching to see if that would be even something worth.
And some of, some of the justification for being concerned about that is that it might be that way for the rest of the life of the building, you know? You can't guarantee, and we wouldn't ask you to guarantee what you were going to do five, 10 years from now. And that wall faces Reynolds Road, which is the major road in the area, and that's what you would see from Reynolds Road, is this kind of industrial-looking steel panels on the wall. So it would be our suggestion, we, at least I'm in, in agreement with the city's requirement that that be looked at with the other, other materials other than steel panel.
Understood, thank you.
Anything else? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition.
For the conditional use.
That's it, right, just the conditional use.
I'll second.
Hold on one second, there was some static there, I just want to make sure the applicant's clear, we're just reviewing and, and voting on the conditional use permit at this time. Okay?
Yes.
And when you're ready.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Keedeman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Under old business, condition is permit to allow recreation facility 8001, is that applicant here? And do you see them?
Yeah. Yes, there, I'm unmuting Dan now.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here, Dan Bezek.
So give us a little history on what's transpired since the last meeting. We saw a letter from your architect.
Correct. Regarding the, the separation of the two areas of the warehouse, the owner of Moving Way has agreed to change the type of, type of storage to, from an S1 to an S2. And according to the Ohio Building Code, if the building is sprinkled, which it is, then there is no firewall separation needed.
Okay. Commissioner's, the questions for the applicant or the administration?
Just one question, the, the entire building currently, is currently sprinkled, correct? The part you're going to use and the part that, that would be on the other side of the separation.
Right? Yeah, the entire warehouse is sprinkled, that's correct.
Okay, are there any more questions?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things. Thanks for working with the administration on this. I, you know, I have kids, and I think it's important to have youth sports and, and create a team atmosphere, and, and I'm glad you worked with the administration to come back. I know you were a little upset last time, and, and I just want to take a minute to thank you for, for choosing Manner, and, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, it was a pleasure working with everybody. A lot of cooperation.
I entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with six conditions.
Second.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich. Mr. Keedeman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Hold on one second, there were, there actually are eight.
I thought there was.
Conditions, there's the site and building conditions, and then there's the conditional use permit conditions, there's six conditional use permit, and two of the site and building.
Does that require two votes?
No, but I just think for the record.
Should redo the vote. Make the record cleaner, I think we need to redo the vote.
Okay.
Redo the motion, redo the vote.
Motion to approve with six conditions.
No, what?
Eight. I'm sorry, eight conditions, two for the site and building, and six for the conditional use permit.
My second.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Keedeman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Kathy, you okay with that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Court of Members to Chapter 1127.
We just need additional time, Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll have them at the next meeting.
So that stays on the table?
Yes.
Okay. Under old business, preliminary site plan of a church in Atkins Road. Back in the barrel.
Back in.
I think you heard a lot of the comments relative to the site plan already. So when it comes time to give us the final site plan, you'll have it under control, right?
That is, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would just, I would make one other comment, and that is, I understand the limitations of the paper and presenting the site plan in scale, but at some point you should show us something that shows the entire property. Even, even the table.
Yep.
It's on the, yeah, it is.
It is?
Yeah, it's on the second page.
Yep.
Oh, I see, yeah, I'm sorry, you got it all, that, very good, never mind, didn't see that page.
Any more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve nine conditions.
Second.
And I'd like to add, I'd like to add one condition is AED device have on site.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, we already have, have one still, that's, that's okay.
Motion to approve with 10 conditions, is 10 being AED device.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Keedeman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. This lady's review to amend the approved development.
Thank you.
For sub lots 35 and 46 within the Lake Shore Island subdivision. Mr. Summers here. Somebody representing him.
Greg Summers.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
How you doing? Do I have the floor?
Yes.
Good evening, Greg Summers, Summers Real Estate Group. Couple of lots at Lake Shore, we originally designed the subdivision, we, we wanted to do the, the meandering sidewalks, and unfortunately, that did not work out, and we had to come back and go to a traditional sidewalk configuration. When the original design was submitted, there was a few sub lots that had setbacks that reflected those meandering sidewalks, so we are asking to make a minor adjustment on the two lots, which will essentially, it'll enhance the buildability of the lots, and it will be of benefit for the adjoining lots, so we, we would like to make that minor modification based upon the history that is provided.
Commissioner's questions for the applicant?
Just a question for the city. Is the city accepting of this, these changes?
Um, we are, but I, I guess we have a question for Mr. Summers, we had received a, a building permit application for one of the houses, and it wasn't with a new setback.
Yeah, I talked to Kayla in your department the other day, and she's basically told her that they're going to withdraw that, it was a miscommunication, and I apologize.
Okay.
It'll be resubmitted, you know, to reflect the new setback parameters. And, and we're, we're also good, the staff report mentioned the 22-foot minimum, and we're, you know, we're good with that as well.
So my question to the city is, the, the city finds this acceptable? This proposal?
Yes.
So make a motion to approve with one condition.
Second.
Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. I'd like to ask a review, reimagining of a commercial building at 93160 Avenue. Is that applicant here?
Yes, he is. Craig, you're unmuted now.
It's Greg Warner, are you there?
Yes.
You state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Greg Warner, 17485 Lookout Drive, Chagrin Falls, Ohio, 44023.
And give us a quick review of what you'd like to do there.
We are looking to redo a facade for the property we just purchased seven, eight months ago. Just adjacent to a property we had owned for seven, eight years, we're looking to tie it in to a existing property. Do a total upgrade to, to the shopping center. Like I said, we acquired it 10 months ago, and it's desperately in need of a up here. Love to clean up that whole corner.
Okay. Commissioner's questions for the applicant?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Administration would like you to combine the lots, can we put that in as a condition? Is there, is there a reason why you wouldn't want that?
We, uh, we can look into that, I, there are, I'm not a lawyer, but, but there are some possible complications in doing so. One, one would be the property, the Starbucks Corner that we have owned, we, we do bill back taxes on a proportionate basis, and the property we just acquired, same scenario. So from an accounting standpoint, I'm not sure that could work out. And the, the other thing, have to get a blessing from our lender, and, and the other thing that kind of pops into my mind, once again, I'm not an attorney, but we own the Starbucks, and one of our tenants there is One Main Financial. I believe we have an exclusive, a restrictive covenant with One Main, as, as far as placing another financial institution in our property. If we combine the two, we have Advanced America, and that could be, I, I don't know, but, but that could be a problem. But, and I don't know, and, and it, once again, falls back into the lap of our lender if, if we, they would work with us in that regard. We do, we do have one, one mortgage on the property in, in total.
Kathy, what's the reason for that?
Mr. Warner did reach out to me because he had noted the same comment that we made. We generally, when we see two properties under the same ownership, like to see them combined, but I think he's presenting some legitimate concerns that maybe warrant them not being combined at this time. I think, I think it's just, again, just good zoning practice to have them combined, but if there are things that prevent it, such as these no compete clauses, and, and they need to be kept separate, we're fine with that. Like I said, we weren't aware of that at the time of, of, of writing the staff report, he did reach out after, after the fact, so.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner's questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To the applicant, I'm looking at the color rendering.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't hold you to these colors, we need to see actual materials. When you look at the far western edge, where the building turns and goes south, the outside, are you going to make, can you maintain that, that parapet height along the west face?
Is, is Ryan Boer participating? He, he's our contractor, I think, I know he's signed up, and he.
He's here.
Well, I mean, the reason, the reason I mention that is that you, that edge, that edge, that western facing elevation is, is easily seen as you're driving on Manner Avenue. And I wouldn't want this renovation to just look like a false front, you know, that you would see that it's only eight inches thick, you know? So it, I would suggest that you turn that parapet and go, go south with it, the, along the west face of the building.
Ri- Ryan?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I think so.
The lower portion of the existing, the lower portion of the existing structure is masonry, where the existing facade or parapet is cinder block. So that's the reason why we have to metal stud frame that and then use ephesus as a covering. I think it'll blend in very well, knowing, thinking that you're not going to see it when you're driving down 90 or about 20, coming from the west to the east. But, um, you know, there's, if it had to be turned and come around the corner a certain distance, I don't see why that couldn't be done. But I think the west elevation there, it's going to blend right in. You could notice that.
You can see that it's completely exposed because of the large parking lot right next to it. So when you, so I would like to make sure that that west elevation maintains that parapet height to the back of the building. It would be ephesus, I guess, you know, to make up whatever the difference is. Is that all right? Can I make that a condition?
That would be, that would be Greg's call there.
Yes, sir. And to the commission and gentlemen's questioning and Ryan, I'm not real clear what that means from a construction standpoint.
Well, I don't, we don't have a west elevation to look at in the plans.
Yes, sir.
And yet, and yet, the west elevation is exposed to the Mentor Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Right away. So all I'm asking is that you take the same height of the parapet that faces Mentor Avenue and wrap it around on the west side. Okay, so it looks like there's brick there. We have a photograph of it.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking for is the fact, I don't want this additional work on the face of the building to look like a false front. You know, that it's only eight inches thick or something. I'd like it to wrap around to make it look more, more like the character of the building. It looks like the brick wall. It looks like the-
The only reason it was designed this way, yeah, is so it would match the existing structure. The other building.
I'm not looking to change what you're doing. I just want the west face to be treated a little consistent with what you're doing on the, on the north face.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, that's, I guess we'll have to look at that, obviously, get the architect back involved and redesign that portion and cost, get some cost on it.
You're going to make that as a condition?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Varga, can you just, I'm looking at the, at the wall also, and I'm, that, that parapet height is only on certain sections. So you want it to carry on to the, to the west wall, even though that last section is, doesn't have the parapet?
Well, the last, the last section, there is a parapet at the last. It's a, there's a coping line. And I just was asking to have that coping line turned and go south along that wall. Because it's very prevalent. When you see it, it would make the building look like you've treated the whole building.
Is that more clear to the applicant? Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. And in doing so,
Yes.
in doing so, we're going to need to engage the architect and re-present a design on that portion of the wall. And when, when might we be able to do that?
You need to see it again, or?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, because we are, we are under some time restraints here. You know, we were hoping to get started in September, and I think with this redesign, whatever.
I mean, I don't, I don't see this as a redesign. We don't have a west elevation on any of the documents, so we really can't tell what this proposal is. All I'm looking for is to have it be consistent so that it looks like it's not just a eight-inch-thick false front, that the building turns and goes to the south.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Chairman. I put up on the screen an area which I think may help explain what Commissioner Varga is talking about.
Yes, sir.
I think what he's just saying is extend, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Varga, basically, these two areas that are clouded in in red, you want that line extended, that same height, all the way around the west elevation?
Yes. Yes. The new, the design that matches the existing has a elevation, has coping, a metal coping height. I just want to see that wrap around the west side of the building. And it looks like that side is all brick, so it's just trying to match the level that you have in the front.
Yes. That is, that would be very simple to do. We are actually putting all new coping on anyways.
So there you go. So this is not really big redesign. It's just-
I'm not a contractor, so Ryan, please address this. I mean, it's-
Yeah. Like I say, we're putting new coping on anyways around the whole, the entire roof of this building. It'll be very easy to stud that in and wrap that around that corner there, so.
And you can do it administratively. The city can just review that when you propose the building permit.
Okay, would y'all like to have a potential rendering of that? Yes, I'm sure.
The administration, yes.
Yeah.
Once the planning commission adds it as a condition, we can review it administratively.
Okay, okay. We'll, we'll address that, and I'll get the architect to wrap that around, and hopefully that'll work for y'all.
Mr. Chairman?
Cook?
On the east side of the building, I see that there's garbage can, dumpsters. It looks like there's some sort of an electrical box. And the Google image that I have looks like there's some pallets stacked up over there. Can we clean this area up and get this, get these dumpsters screened? I don't know if this was permitted prior to what our screening requirements are. But, you know, I guess while we're here, can we, can we update the screening for the city code on dumpsters? Would that be a problem? Kathy, is that, is that something we can kind of retro do here, or?
Are you talking about the west and east sides?
No, I'm talking that picture you see right there.
That's, that's the west side.
The west side, those, those waste management stuff there.
Yes, that's west side. What, what what might we do with that? It's, I mean, it's, and I agree with you. We are, we-
I mean, the time is now, you know, to, to-
Well, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Well, typically, what we require is an enclosure of masonry.
Yes, which we built on the Starbucks side. Correct.
So can you work with the city to come up with some screening?
Yes, sir. Man, yes, we can. Hopefully, we can do this project in the next couple of months.
Like Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, could we approve everything and and they could possibly submit something on the screening only? So they could move forward with their, their, their project, but we could take a look at, or is that something that you can just do administratively?
We could do that administratively. I mean, it's pretty spelled out in the code, so.
Yeah. So nothing that would hold you up?
Okay, that'd be great. We-
Work with Kathy, and you guys will make it happen.
We'll, we'll address the screening there and the westernly side of the building and present something to y'all, and we'll get it done. Look forward to redoing the property.
Let me ask you one more question.
Yes, sir.
Have you hired a landscaper? Because that looked pretty ratty in the, in the past years.
No, no, we haven't. We have not, no, I shouldn't say that. We do have a landscaper. And I would say, we, we have owned the Starbucks property for seven, eight years. We just acquired the adjacent property. We, we're trying, we're trying to stay on top of it. But, and it's an interesting question or comment, and I'm not sure what we can do, because we, we have tried to take darn good care of the corner. And there are panhandlers right on the corner. And I've been out there for the last three weeks. And there's apparently nothing that the city can do about it, because it's on public property. But if you go out there on a Saturday or Sunday, and I've got pictures, there's trash all over our parking lot. They're out on the street trying to raise money, and they put their diapers in the McDonald's in our parking lot. I'm trying to keep the property well-maintained. If there's some suggestions along the landscaping-wise, I'd appreciate it, and we'll work on it. And I am redoing the monument sign to the west of the property, just refacing it, just to upgrade. Don't have to, but we're redoing the sign to the west of the property. But if there's suggestions we can do, because I've tried to keep that corner really nice. But beyond that, please, you know, help me out. What would be appealing to the city?
Kathy, is there a lot of panhandlers there?
I'm not aware. I guess my question to you is, what specifically were you talking about with regard to the landscaping? Do you talk about the dumpster areas, or because the-
I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the overall landscaping in general.
I mean, they've got the tree frontage.
I tell you, may I make a suggestion? What I'd like to do, or for y'all to evaluate, let me cut all the trees down.
No.
No, let me finish. Just a thought. Let me cut all the trees down and do some great planting, low-level planting where the trees are. I would, I'd be in favor of that.
Kathy, any thoughts?
I mean, we can certainly have, you know, our landscape architect work with the applicant on making some landscaping improvements, if that's what you're looking for. You know, obviously, in compliance with the code requirement, frontage, you know, landscaping along the street frontage.
All I have is grass right there. I'd love to cut the trees down and redo the whole corner there.
Because the corner's-
At your desire, landscape-wise, I'll do that.
The corner where the sign is looks fine. I don't see a problem with that. And then you obviously, there's nothing there, which we could, if he, if he took out all the trees, he could do street frontage, you know, landscaping frontage along there.
I'd love to do that. Low, low, low-level landscaping, whatever y'all want. But beyond that, I, and we've discussed that, my partner and I, there's nothing I can really do where the tree line is. There is a very unattractive planter at the entrance, which I'm going to replant. Where, yeah, yes, ma'am, or right by the monument sign on the other side, right there. That white box, actually, I cut that tree down. That white box, right there behind the sign, yes. I cut that tree down. I'm going to re, put in railroad ties, new railroad ties, and plant it with low plants. But I, I I would appreciate if y'all would consider that I cut all the trees down and at your direction, do landscaping there.
So right now, the code reads that there has to be, there should be a landscape strip with a minimum 10 feet width, with at least one tree for every, for every 40 feet right away, which is probably what he has.
Yeah, I don't know that we want you to cut the trees down.
Well, that's fine. If y'all have some direction to landscape that area, please, please pass it on. I'd like to make it more attractive than it is. I'm not sure how I can do that, but if y'all have suggestions, we'll, we'll do it.
Okay, anything else? Any serious, anything else?
A motion to approve with
Five.
five conditions. Number four, carry the parapet wall on the west face of the building and screening of the garbage bins. Number five.
Or second?
Second.
Yes, Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Berkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Teedman?
Yes.
This is a review and amendment to a conditional use permit to expand the daycare center at 7435 Mentor Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Send an applicant here.
Yes, she is.
Hello.
You state your name and address for the record?
Yep, my name is Katrina Alice, and my address is 38392 Shearwater Lane, and that is in Willoughby, Ohio, 44094.
Okay, what do you want to do?
So we are looking to expand our current facility, which we're currently the entire lower level at 7435 Mentor Avenue into the, well, what was the All City Candy storefront, which I believe is the 7441 Mentor Avenue. Basically, right now, with everything going on with COVID, school shutdowns, so on and so forth, we're looking to expand to allow schoolagers, virtual learning, and basically somewhere to go to have the ability to be supervised during the day.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Chairman. I just have a question about the site plan and the exterior play area.
Yes.
When I look at the, can she see us? Can she see us?
I can see you.
Okay, you can't see me.
There, yeah, there, I can see you.
On the, what looks like the, the site map that came from a Google Earth, I would guess, it shows the property line. And at the northwest corner of the building, it shows the property line extending along the face of the building. It goes back just a little bit, and it cuts all the way back to the edge of the pavement and then goes northwest again. So the space between the building and where that cut, that line cuts over is relatively small. When I look at your plan, it shows the, where the daycare, the outdoor recreation space is, it looks to me that the majority of that is in the, is in your neighbor's property.
So we were actually made aware of that after we signed our lease with our landlord. We were made aware of that by the gentleman who owns the building next door. And that was rectified, as far as my, to my knowledge, that there is a lease between our landlord and the other property owner to prevent that from being an issue.
Okay, good. I just, I saw it, and it sounds like you've addressed it, and therefore, it's not a problem to me.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to add one condition, that they have an AED device on site. Is that okay?
It would be okay.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Motion to approve with four conditions, the fourth being ADP.
Second. Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Are you number one here?
Thank you.
Yes, he's here.
Before we begin, we're going to allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do. Those wishing to speak in favor are going to report to a similar opportunity, and then those wishing to speak against. Tell us what you want to do at that location.
Mr. Moravich, are you there?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Thanks. Yeah. I, I want to move my business over there from the prior location on 615.
We've gotten quite a bit of correspondence from the neighborhood.
Yeah, I understand that. My customers ain't too bright. They take off and see how their car runs in a 25 mile an hour zone. Yeah, I spoke with the officer, and I'll, I'll clarify that quick with my customers.
So, are you living there?
No. Oh, I live on 615. 6615, A202.
So what, what can we do about the junk that's up behind the building?
That'll be all done. I'm in the process of removing all of it, everything. I'm grading the lot off, and I got to take a tree down, and I got to re-roof it. I'm going to make it nice, real nice.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
Uh, I'm not sure exactly how the, how this operates. You have two, two overhead doors facing the street.
Right.
And that's how you get the vehicles into your shop?
Yes.
Well, you're also saying that those are parking spaces. They, they can either be one or the other, but they can't be both.
Well, I want to have on the left-hand side where there's no bay, I want to put the handicap parking there. And on the right side, just drop off vehicles. Because I normally don't, I only use the middle bay, because I'm only one person.
Um, yeah, I, I guess I still have a problem with an operating overhead door and, and counting the space in front as a parking space. Also, in, in the back, you, you've got, you've got a hand drawn here that says there's 12 parking spaces. How, how would you be able to delineate that or, or mark it so that they're, they actually exist?
Well, what I was going to do is I was going to put a fence up in the back and, and put five and five, because I would just park two in a row, straight against the back of the property.
Yeah, well, I guess the problem I have is that the space between the, the rows of parking isn't sufficient to be able to drive out. You, you're not creating a driveway. It, it's not a designed parking lot. You say 12 spaces. I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if what you're showing us here is something we can approve.
10, 10 in the back and then just one in the front for handicap.
How many, do we know how many spaces he needs to have?
I really don't need that many, but, because I, I, I turn them around fast. I, I mean, I don't have them but a day or two.
Well, even the picture that we're looking at, there's a picture taken, and there's at least four cars parked in front, which means you wouldn't be able to get into the, the overhead door.
Well, those are gone.
Well, and they can come back. If they think they can park there, they'll park there.
Yeah, I'm going to have to draw a new picture of what I would-
Yeah, I-
It's going to be.
How do we feel about this? You also have a driveway on the side of the building?
Yeah.
How, how wide is that? Does that meet the requirements for a driveway?
I believe, it's, it's halfway between the building and, and the house next door. I got to get a property stake in front and see exactly, because I'm eventually going to pave it all around the building. There, there's a, there's a-
Are we, are we premature here with this proposal?
Kinda. I got a lot of work to do. It's in worse shape than I thought.
Let's table it.
All right, we can, yeah. And then I'm going to propose that we table this.
Okay.
And you can get a, a formal plan.
Okay.
Second. Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. And a motion to adjourn.
Motion to-